Welcome to the Punk City Public Schools Board Wrap-Up Show via Zoom. I'm your host, Shawn Anderson, on behalf of Punk City Public Schools. And our guest every month for the Board Wrap-Up Show, Superintendent Shelley Errett. And we are recapping and talking about the Board of Education meeting that happened on Monday, September 14th. And Shelley Errett, there's quite a bit to talk about from this board meeting. And I know that the list of things to do and the ever-changing policies and procedures and everything that's just constantly changing, I'm sure you're using pencil instead of pen, right?
Right. Well, we use documents, but they change often, so.
Well, before we talk about the changes in safety protocols based on the correlation of COVID, the COVID situation, why don't we talk about some regular Board of Education business that took place for the September board meeting? The Alternative Education Report, what was this all about?
Okay, this is an annual report that's required if you participate in the Alternative Education Program. And as you know, Carla Streeter is our principal at Wildcat Academy, and it's an ever-popular program. And we have five certified teachers out there at Wildcat Academy and the director, Carla Streeter. And it's an interview process to get in, and these are kids who, for one reason or another, they don't want to be at the high school, or they're more successful in a small group setting, but they're, it's not, they're not in the program because there's discipline issues. There just may be a reason why they want a different setting other than that typical high school. And we have five teachers out there and Carla, and we can have 15 students per teacher based on the Alternative Education Guidelines in Oklahoma. So we are full out there. We have 105 students, and there is always a waiting list. So we have the teachers, and we're able to get a few more students out there because we have an assistant out there as well. And the plan allows for more students with an assistant. And each year, the program is evaluated by the Alternative Education Group in Oklahoma. And she shared the outcomes of the evaluation. And they are doing things fabulously out there. The evaluation was stellar, and she talked about the areas in which they were evaluated. But one thing that I do want to say about Wildcat Academy is it's been real instrumental in helping kids graduate. You know, for one reason or another, they may not have finished school or kept them from dropping out of school. So we've had a lot of success with that. And Carla and her team do an excellent job of building relationships with students. And any educator will tell you, it's, you have to have a relationship before kids can learn, a positive relationship. And kids really want to come in there and be with them, and it's just a real successful program. Carla stated that we could probably have 200 kids in that program if we had the staffing and the space available to accommodate the required guidelines of Oklahoma Alternative Education. So good report, always a good update, it occurs yearly.
Well, another report that is, you know, the Punk City Board of Education, no stranger to this report, it's the Annual Safety Report. How is that Annual Safety Report, is that different because of the pandemic?
Well, we do it every year. It's required by law to update our board on our safety achievements and progress and where we want to go. But there, it can be situational, too. Obviously, when we're in a global pandemic, we do have to prioritize on some other issues that we typically wouldn't have focused on a global pandemic prior to this year because we haven't experienced that. But Brett Smith shared this report, and he talked about our achievements. And one of the biggest achievements that I'm most proud of and so thankful for our students is that we have a secure entrance and a lobby guard at every single one of our schools. At one point, the only school that we didn't have that in was the pre-K center, and that was completed last winter, and it's beautiful. So no one can get on our building without being buzzed in at the, by the office. So, and, and the front doors, there's a vestibule, and the only door that's open is the front door to the vestibule, and then they, no one can get beyond the double doors. So that's, it's so much security for our students, and it gives me a lot of peace of mind, and I'm sure our staff and our parents that our, our students are able to be in a secure building. And that's thank, we have been able to do that thanks to our huge support for our bond issues, because those are always part of our bond projects. And, and as you know, as, as things progress and technology progresses and there's new advancements in security, this will be ever-evolving that we'll need to keep up with security measures, and that will be our top priority. Another thing that happened last year is we purchased a whole new camera system for secondary schools, and that needed to be updated. We use our camera systems a lot for security measures, and they can be used for disciplinary issues. We do have camera systems on our school buses and gives us a lot of info in which we can make decisions. But the camera systems are going to be really helpful during a global pandemic because that can help, help us with our contact tracing to see who may have been within six feet of a positive case for 15 minutes or more. We have two SROs that serve our district. One is housed at the high school, and then one splits time between east and west. And then if we need an SRO at one of our elementary schools, they'll go anywhere that we ask them to. So that's, that's a fabulous resource for our district. We have security guards at the high school. So the front door, even before they can be buzzed in, is manned by a security guard at the high school. And then at our, at our guard stations in the parking lot, we have security guards there as well. We have barriers and corridors. If you remember in our, in our October 2015 bond election, we have the corridor between the Fine Arts Building at the high school.
Right, right.
And the high school. And previously, our students had to walk from the Fine Arts Building back into the high school. It was an open area, so we have a corridor there now, which ensures safety for kids traveling. Something new that we have done in the last few years, we have participated in the ALICE Active Shooter Preparedness. And all of our teachers take the course each year, it's an online course, and, and we have students involved in that. And what ALICE stands for is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And you go through some training that's certain situations, and you make the best informed decision you can. If there's an active shooter, you know, people are going to be really on edge and tense, and it just helps you keep your focus if you can focus on those five acronyms and when you should choose each one. So we complete that every year. And, and then obviously, we do security upgrades even with our curbs, if our curbs are not level or something, but yearly security updates. So this year, this year, we have been focusing a lot on sanitation in regard to the global pandemic and have made a lot of different changes to our protocols as far as cleaning and the time. And we were able to purchase some misters that actually spray a sanitation fluid over tables or desks, and it dries within two minutes. And so Brett was able to give that report. In addition to that, we have the required drills that we do every year. So we do drills all the time. In the fall, we do fire drills, we have to within the first 15 days of school. So you may have seen children outside. In addition to fire drills, we do tornado drills, intruder-on-campus drills, earthquake drills, shelter-in-place drills. So it's, it's constant, there's always, we want our kids to be prepared in the event that we, we need to take safety or precautions. And we hope that never happens, but we will be prepared if it does.
Yeah, the Annual Safety Report presented to the Board of Education, Brett Smith doing that, and it is a comprehensive report. Well, aside from all of the challenges that, that are continuing with this school year and the challenges that preceded the beginning of the school year, there was one challenge you certainly didn't need and no school district would ever want to happen, and it put Punk City Public Schools on the national news. And the Board of Education, the board members were given an update on the ransomware cyber attack report and update on how that recovery continues. I'm sure it's ongoing, can you fill us in?
It is ongoing, but we have made huge progress. The weekend before school was scheduled to start, we did have a ransomware attack, and it happened on a weekend, and the cyber criminals knew exactly what they were doing because we could have caught it had we been in school. And we do have a strong firewall system, but I had actually spoken with an FBI agent, and I'm like, how can they get through our firewalls? And, and it's just a constant battle to keep up because there's new ways to get into different systems, and, and it's, it's just ever-changing with our firewalls. But they were able to access, and it, and it wasn't through an employee clicking on a link they shouldn't have clicked on, somehow got access to a server. And then they went through our system, and anywhere that they could get in, they actually encrypted our data. And, you know, that's okay, encrypting data, we can rebuild lesson plans, things like that. But one of the major hosts that they attacked was our Power School Student Information System. It was all encrypted from our enrollment. We had no parents' phone numbers, we had no schedules. We'd worked all summer to build class schedules at the high school. And that is backed up every day on our backup server, but the backup server even was attacked. And thankfully, one of our employees, who is our Power School Administrator, he actually handles all things Power School, had backed up Power School to an offline server that they couldn't get to. And that typically had not been our practice. So we, he had done that on a Monday, and the attack was on a Saturday. So we, we just lost data for a week. Now, that was a lot of data, but it could have been devastating for everything for all summer, and we were able to recover that. We actually worked with our insurance company and worked with for rent cyber criminal forensic specialists to work with the negotiators. They, they requested a ransom of us for half a million dollars and told us that it would double if we didn't pay in Bitcoin within seven days. And, and they knew what they could get, that if, if, they knew that what they attacked was something that we had to have. And the FBI agent that I had spoken with in cyber crimes had told me that this is not, this, this is something that cyber ransomware attackers do. They may attack hospital information because they know that the organization has had data encrypted that they're willing to pay for. And he said, if you don't have to pay for it, we are not recommending that you pay. We're a public school, we don't have an extra half million dollars lying around. So thankfully, we had that backup, and we worked with some attorneys to see if any of our data had been stolen, and it had not. It had just been locked down. So we've worked with our insurance company and some great organizations to help us, and I will have to commend our IT team. They have rebuilt so many of our programs that we lost. And the last thing that we had to rebuild was our Trackett system, and our Trackett system is our request for something to be repaired for maintenance or technology, and that, that was finished last week. So Brett and Ryan Dooley just updated the board on the progress there. So now, we have lost some of our documents for good, but these were like lesson plans, templates, things like that. Everything that we need to operate is finally back up and running.
Well, and, yeah, what a relief. Have you heard of other districts that have paid ransoms like this?
I have, I have heard of some cities that have paid ransoms, and I have heard of some medical institutions that have paid ransoms, and that was from the FBI agent. The reason we made CNN or NBC Nightly News was because there was another, it wasn't a ransomware attack, it was a cyber attack in Miami-Dade School District. And so there was wondering if there were, there was any correlation. And that same weekend, I believe Carnival Cruises had a ransomware attack. And the FBI agent that I spoke with in, as far as cyber crimes, told me that ransomware was a thing probably 10 years ago, but with COVID issues going on, that, that cyber criminals are kind of making a recurrence with ransomware. And we certainly don't want to pay that because we don't want to reinforce that behavior. So we weren't.
Good. Yep. Now, how, how is the, the entire system, Punk City Public Schools, how, is it fortified a little differently than before?
Yes, we, we made, some of the changes that we made, we are now uploading Power School to an offline server every single day. That's our main thing that we can't, can't lose. We are going to do a mass password change so that there will be specific criteria for each password, the level of complexity for each password, just to be safe. That was one of the recommend, recommendations of some of the people that we work with. We have really strong passwords, but these will be one that you'll have to write down, different size letters, capitals, lowercase characters, that kind of thing. So we will, we will implement the mass password change by October 1.
Yeah. Well, it was a long Board of Education meeting, as you might imagine, and for obvious reasons. It's the most challenging school year in the history of school years for Punk City Public Schools. And Shelley Errett, I know that superintendent's report that you delivered to the board members was, was heavy on the, the current COVID situation as well, I'm sure. What exactly was included in that report to the board?
Well, I shared our current situation as far as our COVID update and our data in our school. And at the time of this presentation, we had just completed, like, oh, let's see here, five, five, 14 days of school. And at that time, we had had nine days of no positives and five days of positive cases at the sites. And I will tell you that a positive case impacts lots of students. We are tasked by the State Department of Education to go in and do contact tracing for schools. We follow the school guidelines, report that to the K County Health Department, they set the quarantine or isolation, and, and then they follow up with the close contacts. And, and it's, it's hard on people to understand, but if a student has been less than six feet for 15 minutes or more, they are considered a close contact. And the quarantine is 14 days because that's the incubation period. And whenever there's a positive, it usually affects between 30 and 40 students. And I will tell you, it could be so much, so many more students, but because of the protocols that we have put in place to keep our cohorts small, our group cohort, cohort small, it, it could be much more devastating. Now, I shared that information Monday. This is Friday. We have not had a wonderful week as far as our COVID updates. As of yesterday, we had completed 18 days, and, and I'm saying as of yesterday because I don't know what today holds still yet. But we are 10 days of no positive and eight days of positives. And four of the five days this week, we have had three days of positives. On Wednesday, we had five positive school cases. But here's the good news, two of those were in the schools, different schools, and three of those, the cases had not been in school since the weekend, so it didn't affect a lot of people. We had a case this week that affected a lot more people, and here's, here's what I can tell our viewers, that if a case involves buses, that is going to have a lot of close contacts because we got new algorithms from the state, the health department. And basically, if you're on a bus, it's probably going to be a close contact. Any of our kids that are in physical contact activities, if there is a positive, the state epidemiologist has directed us that everyone is a close contact. So we had an example this week in which there were some close contact activities and, and a couple of bus routes, which actually affected about, one positive affected about, at this, at this point, 130 people.
Wow, wow, that's a lot of, a lot of quarantining.
It seems like a lot, but it's just one positive. And, and you know, a lot of districts didn't start school. They went to all distance learning because they knew this was going to be a risk. And in a global pandemic, it's what risk are you willing to take? We, we know that face-to-face instruction is the best for our students, and we wanted to give that opportunity. And, and we're not close to closing. If we have four, five, or six positives in a school, an outbreak in a school, that may be the time to close that school. Or if we do it district-wide, it would have to be a huge outbreak district-wide. But one of the risks that we take is that we do have to follow the CDC guidelines, and if there is a positive in the school, we have to take action. And we are, we are, our legal guidance from the State Department of Education is to do that. Now, we are not the government agency who decides the quarantines and the isolations. We are their contact tracing agent. We provide that information, they set the quarantines and the isolation. So it's a joint effort as directed by the Oklahoma Health Commission, the Oklahoma State Department of Education, and the Oklahoma State Department of Health. So we're, our hands are kind of tied. We want to keep school open, we want to keep our kids involved in activities. But to do that, we are going to have to follow CDC guidelines and the guidance that we have been advised to take. Now, our alternative is go, is to go to full distance learning. And I can tell you that those many schools that went to full distance learning are now rethinking that, and many are opening. It's, it's, to me, face-to-face instruction is the best, and we protect our kids by mitigating the spread of the virus. A lot of schools are starting back. So with that said, after the report, our board opted to take a look at our safety protocols. And as you know, the counties have COVID alert systems, and it's based on the number of new cases, paroling, seven-day average, based on a capita of 100,000. And up until last week, Ponca City has maintained in the yellow level, which is the low-risk level. Then last week, there was a change in the COVID alert system, that probable cases were now combined with confirmed cases. So if it was a quick test, they waited for the results to come back from a lab that said they were positive, but now they are counting those as probable cases. And I'm understanding that if someone in the household that lives in the home tests positive, they count all of the family members as probable cases. Because I am telling you, my, my experience in the last four weeks with COVID, it spreads like wildfire. If it's in a family, everyone in the family is going to contract COVID. That's our experiences with the families that we have dealt with. So our options are to stay in school and mitigate or go to full distance learning. So what the board did, the board added, we, our previous protocol had said, when we get to red level, the 50 red level, that we would go to full distance learning. All right, so with probable cases combined with confirmed cases and in facts that may be outside of our control, the, the board decided that in the red level, we would go to distance learning when deemed appropriate. And at this point, I, I can assign, I can do contact tracing, and the health department assigns quarantines and act, and isolations, and I say, I, I'm talking, the district does contact tracing. And I could actually consult with the board, and if I saw that we had an outbreak at, let me just pick a school, Roosevelt, then I could actually quarantine all of Roosevelt for the 14-day close-contact quarantine period. We're not going to do that if there is one isolated case, and so far, that has been the case. But it would be irresponsible to close Garfield if there were no cases and it was contained at Roosevelt. So I do have the, the authority to consult with the board if we close a building, but if, if spread becomes so bad in our schools that wide community spread or school widespread of positive cases, if we were to shut the whole district, that does require board approval. So those were some changes that were made. And I'll give you an example, Stillwater Public Schools, they went to the red level last week, and they have never started school. It's been distance learning. And the assumption is, a lot of those cases have been, a lot of the new cases on the COVID alert system have been because of university testing. Well, the university is still in school and still participating in activities, but Stillwater Public Schools is not based on the COVID alert system. They're not in school. And last week, they made the decision to stop activities because they did reach the red level. Our board wants to make sure that if we reach that point, that it's based on our data, not some outlying cause. Muskogee County, their risk level was 146, that's nearly three times above the red level. But there was an outbreak at the women's prison, so Muskogee did not shut school. And, and you know, that would make sense if it's a contained outbreak, then, then the, then the schoolchildren are still in school. So those were the decisions that our board made, and they also made that as far as activities. Prior to Monday night, we said at orange level two or the red level that we would close all of our activities down, our extracurricular activities. So they put that flexibility in place when deemed appropriate, and if we close down our activities, that will require an emergency board meeting. So those were the changes to the safety protocols.
A lot of things to consider, and I'm sure as the school year proceeds, more, more challenges will present themselves. But you and the board and everyone involved with Punk City Public Schools, rising to the moment, and those moments changing day by day, right?
Day by day, it's lots of hours, I will tell you that. But you know, it's, it's important, that's why we're in this business. We want to keep our kids in school. None of us have gone through a global pandemic, and obviously, we can't have the same goals that we've always had. But we were closed a whole quarter back in the spring by mandate of the state. And, and our board, and I, and I know our staff just felt it's time to get our kids And and our board and I, and I know our staff just felt it's time to get our kids in school.
Yeah.
So we're we're going to keep it open as long as we can, but we are not going to pose a danger to our students, our staff, our community. So things could change. Um but we are not to that point, even though this week was rough of of closing the entire school. Today's Friday. I will tell you, when I have time, I track our new cases. I think we'll go up this week. Well, I know we'll go up this week. Uh I just don't know if we'll go from orange level one to orange level two. Should know about eleven thirty and we're probably getting close to that.
Well, if you want to stay updated with Punk City Public Schools, you can. There are multiple ways. There is the PCPS app on your device. Uh be sure to get that. Updates are sent uh via push notifications on that app. To uh to alert you. You can also go to Punk City Public Schools on Facebook. And of course, PCPS.us is the website. Very simple and very easy to find the information and the updates. You can stay informed and stay up to with up-to-the-minute updates. From Shelley Eret, Superintendent Eret, and the entire staff in each school. You can also find.
Each each school has their own Facebook page and to communicate with parents. And that came about actually in this, during the spring closure. And I will say, our teachers do an excellent job of communicating and sharing information on those sites. And and I've probably done more press releases in in this year than I have in the entire previous three years.
Right.
So um we we want to keep our public informed. We are living and breathing this pandemic twenty-four, seven. So we know the changes in CDC guidelines, which are often, by the way. And it is a novel virus, so it's new and it's changing and science changes. But our our parents want to be informed. And I will answer questions on Facebook and that's typically not my habit, but our parents need to know. I I return calls to parents all evening usually. In in information and communication is a powerful tool, especially if there is something new occurring. And obviously, a global pandemic is is serious and new for all of us.
Right. Shelley Eret, Superintendent of Punk City Public Schools, our guest every month, of course. Following the Board of Education meeting, that's going to do it for the Board Wrap-Up Show for September. The Board Wrap-Up Show will come your way uh in October, of course. And the date on that October, it's always the second Monday of the month. And uh the Board Wrap-Up Show follows shortly after that. Superintendent Shelley Eret, thank you for being with us and uh we appreciate the updates and all of the extra hours. That you, the board members, and everyone at the Board of Education and all of the sites and the educators, really going above and beyond.
Above and beyond. Our people are working hard. I have to commend them as well. This is new to them too. They're doing distance learning. They're doing live instruction. You know, we have a virtual school. So it is truly a paradigm shift for education this year and for the nation, not just education. But uh when it comes to our children and people in 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 large groups, we've had to make a lot of changes. So.
Certainly. All right. Shelley Eret, thank you again. Going to do it for this edition of the Board Wrap-Up Show via Zoom this year for obvious reasons. And until next time. Thank you for watching.